Okay, give me one second, I should come on. Okay, we're recording, sir, go right ahead.
All right, folks. We'll call the meeting to order and I'll, I'll read that, uh, the time is seven twenty-three P M. We had to start a little late due to technical difficulties. Uh, with the system and then I'll read the, uh, COVID disclaimer. Due to the increasing concerns surrounding the COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so using methods listed below. Video and or audio of meeting will be aired on Comcast Local TV nine at a later date. A live recording of the meeting will be available on Town of Dayton YouTube channel which can be accessing using W W W dot YouTube dot com slash Town of Dayton. Could everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the of the United States and to the Republic one nation under God indivisible with liberty that's all I got for a flag, but it's better than nothing.
No work.
Did it work? Yeah. Back to the okay. All right, let's do the roll call of attendance. I'll start out with Mr. Marvell.
Here.
Mr. Eckerson.
Here.
Mr. Pruitt.
Here.
And Karen Robitows here as our secretary. Karen, you can still hear us.
I think she got frozen on us.
Uh, we're gonna have that sometimes with her if she loses the signal. Karen, you still with us?
Yeah, I hear you.
Oh, okay, good.
Woody Woods? Woody?
No, he's not in the waiting room either, I'm watching it.
He's absent. James Digit, I believe, is absent on, uh, conservation meeting. Adele, did I get you?
Yes, here.
Okay, uh, Tim?
Here.
You're on the phone. Is anyone, I, did I miss anybody out there?
Adele, can you do me a favor? Can you speak one more time?
Um, I'm here.
Okay, I gotta change your name and I'll straighten that out now. I'm sorry.
I'm here, obviously, is the chairman, Tom Burke. Is there anyone I missed out there that's not on the camera or that we skipped over? Oh, and we have a guest, um, Patricia Gales from the historical. I know she's out there. She's on on the site. Okay, what I'd like to do, if it's all right with the folks, is, um, we'd like to, uh, go out of order with the regular agenda and I'd like to bring up, uh, Patricia Gales. If there's any questions or any follow-up or, uh, anything you want to interact, she's on the Zoom with us, uh, we're, she's wrapping up all her stuff and then we're gonna get everything ready, you know, everything more or less is ready for the town meeting, so we're gonna go over that. All the stuff that we have to vote on individually. So, Pat, did you want to talk to the folks or come on?
I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to everyone for their support for this project and to make sure that you, Tom, as the chair, had all of the information that you needed for the warrant article and you indicated that you're all set. So if you, if there's anything else that you need, if anything, you know, comes up, please let me know. Um, I will be at town meeting to speak to the article if needed. You know, to provide more information, so. Whatever you need, just let me know.
And we thank, thank you for that and, uh, we want to, like I say, we want to maintain our good relationship. Also, Tim Reins is, uh, always gonna be in the loop with us.
Okay.
Tim, did you need anything to say?
Well, I'll discuss the warrant articles, you know, uh, Mrs. Gales provided all the information to me and I put the article together. I sent it along to everyone, so you've had an opportunity to look at that. And, uh, that's already been said, there's a place all the, through the board of selectmen, so I'm going to make a motion that we accept the warrant article as written for submission to the board of selectmen to the annual town meeting.
A motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so is there any discussion on the motion? I think it's pretty clear, everyone got the information. And, uh, I think we're on track with everything and Tim did a fine job of writing everything and getting everything, uh, distributed and helping, working as a team, which I really appreciate. And, uh, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. So we'll start off with Dave Marvell.
Aye.
David Eckerson.
Aye.
Adele?
Aye.
Dave, I got Dave, right? Uh, Tim?
Aye, Tim.
Tim Reins, thank you. Oh, Mr. Pruitt, I'm sorry, why do I always forget? I, I don't do it on first.
Oh, I know that.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. I do have you here. Um, I believe that's everybody and I will, uh, vote as the chairman, Tom Burke, when I vote aye. So it's unanimous and we'll move on to the next, uh, I thank everybody for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tim, if you want to say anything?
Yeah, if Karen wanted to ask some question, I'll go ahead, Karen.
No. No, I'm all set.
Are you sure?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to say that, um, I want to thank the committee and especially Mrs. Gales for all of her, uh, preparation and, uh, putting everything together with the information provided to the committee and, uh, the committee's due diligence and, uh, doing our work. So what I'd like to say also is that, um, we're gonna need to have representative, or the committee would be to, uh, attend town meeting, to read the article and then if any questions are needed, Mrs. Gales will be present to, uh, answer any if necessary.
Right.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem going to it, to do it. You want somebody other than the chairman to go?
Oh, no, yeah, especially the chair, of course, if the chair can read the article to the residents and then.
Yeah, I can go and take care of it, yeah.
And then, of course, you'd like to have a couple of members there, you know, the, one of the members could second or maybe there'll be a second from the crowd or, uh, you know, we, we prefer not.
Yeah, like it normally the process goes, right?
Yeah, that's all. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'm done with that, uh, and I'd like to, again, just thank everybody for, uh, their hard work.
And Tim, we'd like to especially give you a lot of thanks for all your hard work. And especially the stuff that you do on your own time, you know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. I don't think people realize how much you do.
Well, thanks, Tom, I, I appreciate that.
And I mean that too, because that's how I learned this stuff. You know, it's every day, it's a, uh, new, you learn something new every day, but, uh, we do, uh, thank you from our, the bottom of our hearts. Cause you worked hard though, you know, and for a long time. All right.
And I'm gonna leave you guys, thank you so much, and we appreciate the support. It's a really exciting project and we're looking forward to getting started, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Patricia, take care.
Yeah, you too.
You.
Thanks, Pat, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Okay. And that's, it's nice to help people that they have a good project. Okay, I'd like to move on to old business. The reason we just wanted to get her so she didn't have, we wanted to take her first out of, kind of out of order because we didn't want her to be going here all night long. One thing I want to say about the, uh, I've got something on the agenda, I'm just gonna strike it because basically, it was something that just came down, but it wasn't really supposed to be part of the agenda, but I don't think we, that, that has to be handled another way later on because that process has exhausted itself. So that will not be acted on. That's just, uh, if you notice on your paperwork, that, uh, item there for Dayton Trails, that was, that was already, that was just a accidental misprint. So that won't be, that won't be acted on, that's done. If he, uh, basically, they're gonna have to reapply or find some other funding. But, uh, that, that, that's exhausted, this, that was just a misprint. Okay, is there any other old business or unfinished business? That you have out there? I don't, I don't believe so. Um, seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna move on to, uh, the next thing is the, we have to reorganize our committee. And, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but every time they have an election, we, we reorganize our committee, Tim, am I correct?
Yeah, correct, and, um, you know, there's, I wanna talk about a little bit of that, uh, for my own, for my own, uh, view of that later, but, um, what I want to say is that, um, there'll be a new, uh, representative coming from Parks and Recreation, um, I'm, I've, so, um, what you can do legally, yes, you can reorganize, like, you do have a quorum amongst the members who are present. Um, again, you know, the, the committee is still not under the full complement because you're still missing two out of large members also.
Yes.
And probably be a new representative, I would think, coming from the planning board possibly, so. But you do have a, uh, full complement of a quorum, so you, you can do regular business, so it's up to the chair.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if you've, in the past, when you reorganized, did you feel better when you had a full complement or have you done it when you were low on people?
Um, we've always done it where there's always been a quorum and even, you know, you're not, um, you know, full sitting board of nine, I think maybe once nah, maybe, maybe two years, maybe two out of the eight years, eight years I've been doing it, maybe we've got a full complement of nine.
I did notice that. No, go ahead, Tim, sorry.
So I'll talk a little bit about that under, um, public input because it's not on the agenda. That's something I'm just gonna keep in my mind, so you can move along.
Um, the other thing was I did notice that the town, uh, this last selectmen's meeting, I didn't attend it, I didn't go via Zoom to watch it, but, and I haven't watched it yet. But I noticed on the agenda, they, they did advertise that we were looking for members.
Oh, good.
So that is out there. There's a lot of committees and commissions that they're looking for people. I mean, it's a long, it's the longest list I've seen in a while. So anyhow, but I haven't been here as long as you have. Now, the next thing would be, um, since we more or less took care of the, uh, we have to go over the items that, they break them down, you have to vote on them separately. And, um, it's your, it's your, each item that, like, you're ten, ten and ten and you're, you're, uh,
You're getting a little ahead of yourself, um,
Okay.
At the reorganization, you have to approve the minutes of the February and the March meetings.
Oh, that's right, I didn't even reorganize it yet. I'm sorry. I need to have somebody, um, I am interested in continuing as chairman, but I have to have somebody nominate me, right, and second it?
Correct.
All right, so. You want to do the chair first? What usually?
So, um, I'd like you to, I'd like the chair who's there right now, present, to step down and I will, um, run the meetings, the vice chair.
Okay.
So at this time, I'm going to entertain motions for chairman of the Community Preservation Commission.
Or nominations?
Any nominations? For chairman?
I nominate, uh, Thomas Barkwin to continue, if he's willing to serve.
Is there a nomination? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in the second. Any further discussion on Mr. Thomas Barkwin as the chairman of the CPC? Mr. Barkwin, I'll ask first, do you accept?
I do.
With that being said, let's, uh, vote by roll. Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mrs. Callard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I do feel. So I, I like, I feel very, I, I'm much more confident with it. And, uh, thanks to Tim, I think I've got a better handle on it. And the nice part is everybody's out there uh, as a resource and everybody helps each other and I think this thing is already, always run that way. I think it's one of the better run, uh, outfits in the town. Okay, the next thing would be, uh, financial, Tim?
Nope, you gotta go to the, who's, vice chairman, right down, right down the line.
Now, you, can you stay on?
No.
Okay. Uh, all right, so the next, uh, now, do I step back up because you got me back up there or what?
You are, you are in charge of the meeting, sir.
Okay, so, um, let's bring up vice chair. Is anybody interested in vice chair? Serving as vice chair? Chairman? Who, who would act as, uh, if I can't make it or has to do some business if I can't do it or we already have, uh, just keep in mind, we have two signatories, uh, Dave Eckerson, the financial guy right now, is, uh, the backup signatory and that is all cleared with the town accountant. So vice chairman, anybody?
I'm, I'm willing to do it, but I'd like to continue as financial officer if, uh,
Yeah, I think you're good at that, yeah.
Is, is that, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe there's any conflict of interests, um, I, I think that the, you could vote this evening and, um, we could find out if there is a conflict later and just rescind the vote and do something different, you, you guys could do it in the future if you like, that's.
I mean, can he do both then?
I believe he can.
All right. It's really just.
I'll second, uh, if, um, I will make a motion to have Mr. David Eckerson serve as vice chairman of the Community Preservation Commission.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion?
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded and we'll, we'll check it out to make sure it's on, it's all right, but I don't, from what we.
No, you're only voting, you're only voting on one position if you heard my motion.
Sorry, sorry, okay. My, I stand corrected. All right, so let's vote on the, uh, I'll just hold off on that verbiage there. Um, the vote has been made and seconded on, uh, making Mr. Eckerson the vice chair, is there any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for, uh, roll call vote on, on that. This. Tim Reins?
Aye.
Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Dave Eckerson, can you vote for yourself? I don't know. Um, yeah, I'm, I don't even know if that's, I'm not trying to make it, yeah, you could probably abstain. I'm gonna, as the chair, I'd like to vote, yes, absolutely. And, um, Adele?
Aye. Yes.
Okay, and, uh, that's all we have out there, I believe. Oh, Mr. Tom, I did it again, Mr. Pruitt, I gotta put you in bigger letters or something here. Sorry, Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Sounds like, uh, everyone present in, that can vote is unanimous on that? So.
Mr. Chairman?
So moved, all right, Tim? Go ahead.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, appoint Mr. David Eckerson as the financial officer for the Community Preservation Commission.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, well, is there any discussion out there? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead with the roll call. Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Eckerson, I think you're probably gonna abstain, right? I don't know. Uh, Adele?
Aye.
Tim Reins?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The chairman, Tom Burke, when, and, uh, did we get everybody out there? Okay.
Yes, you did.
So next, that's all the, uh, like, the executive branch of this committee, right?
Correct.
All right, so that's where we're at, then we can close that out. And, um, and we'll move on. Once again, thank you for your confidence in me as the chair.
Yes, thank you.
So let me continue, I appreciate that and I'll continue to strive for, you know, for, it's not perfection, but it is progress. Right? So, um, but we'll work towards perfection. Next, uh, all right, we got to that, let's go to the approval of the minutes we have. Did everybody get the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. So basically, there was a couple sets of minutes, I believe, that we had to just, uh, get squared away. One set is, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the,
Mr. Chairman, if, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Tim, go ahead.
The, uh, chairman can not make a motion, he can step down, um, but, which would not be appropriate, so at this time, I will make the motion if I may to approve the meeting minutes of not only the February eighteenth of twenty twenty-one meeting, but also the meeting minutes of March eighteenth of twenty twenty-one.
Yes, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on approving the two, the February eighteenth and the March eighteenth of twenty twenty-one minutes. And is there any discussion or questions or corrections or any problems that they saw, that you see on those, uh, minutes? I seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna call the roll. Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Dave Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt? Sorry, I forget. I'm gonna get on that one. Uh, Mr. Eckerson?
Aye, I voted already.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, so I screwed you up instead of Mr. Pruitt. Um, Adele?
Aye.
And Tim?
Aye.
Mr. Reins, thank you. I believe we got everybody and, oh, uh, the chairman, Tom Burke, when I vote aye. So, that's all set. That'll be unanimous.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Can you hear us?
I think you'd be frozen.
I hear a little bit. Karen, we're just trying to thank you, Tim, everybody for your work. We voted on the minutes.
Okay, Karen's back with us.
We voted on the minutes, did you catch all that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead with, uh, I'm gonna go next with, uh, my report, um, I don't, I do have, uh, and after I, I just have a short thing and then I'll let, I want, well, I want Tim to speak as the, before he, uh, might have, I think he's got a few things he'd like that, so, uh, basically, we're getting, we're, uh, we've changed the way that we do the payrolls, uh, the town accountant, like, she can go direct, put her stuff directly in to the town accountant and then, um, all I have to do is initial it via email, so that takes a step out of it, makes it a little more efficient. Uh, we're working on getting all the, uh, records uh, moved over to the town hall, which they're probably already been, they've been there the whole time, but I mean, they're basically in one spot. And, um, everything will be like, for the future, a little more, we're gonna try to have it, so, you know, we're not gonna be here. We'll be here as long as we can be here, but you have to have stuff so people can pick up the, uh, the ball when other people move on and then, uh, so we're doing that, trying to get that streamlined, that, when, there's gonna be a little place where you can go on a computer, once they open up the town hall, where you can access stuff. Uh, so we're gonna try to have access where if you, you know, people can come in there and access the, the information if they don't have a computer. And, uh, that's for everybody, it's kind of like a little thing they did when they remodeled the, uh, where the selectmen used to meet, they remodel, I haven't been in there yet. And then, um, basically, we got about the same stuff which we'll go over when Tim's gonna talk about some, some items. And, uh, just want to thank you guys, uh, guys and gals for putting me back in there for another term. And, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to the, oh, did anybody have any questions? Or concerns? If not, I want to turn it over to, to the, uh, to Tim for a little bit and then we'll move on.
Are we in their old business or new business right now?
I just, I'm, I would consider it, uh, we're still kind of falling under new business because.
Well, you're giving your report is under what the agenda is, correct, Mr. Chairman, so you're giving your.
Yeah, I would call it new, yeah.
Okay, just one, one question, so, uh, we can get thirteen people in the Old Town Hall, but I don't know if we want to meet here or still wait this out, maybe do a couple more Zoom meetings? You know, tonight was a bad night because I crashed, but usually this doesn't happen, but I just want to let you know that we can have thirteen people in Old Town Hall. And I know we got a small group, so, but I know COVID, COVID hasn't gone away yet either, so.
Yeah, what worries me, Dave, is the variant.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
I say, continue on with another Zoom meeting, we'll talk about it later.
I'm all right for another Zoom, anybody else?
I think we should play it safe and stay with the Zoom.
Okay, sounds good to me.
If everybody's kind of agrees, you know, it's kind of an off-the-cuff discussion, we're not having to vote on, I just want, we just want, we just want the people to, how you people feel, you know, that's all. I agree with the safety.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, I decided to bring it up, we'll wait, we'll wait this out a little bit longer. We're almost there.
Yeah, don't be sorry. I give my fir-, I don't get my first shot till the nineteenth.
Oh, yeah.
If I could ask a question here, if, yeah, if we move to, uh, in, uh, in-person meetings, uh, will the Zoom option still be there? Because what seems to happen is that you can't get blindsided by, uh, some person you had no idea was carrying it and then you're quarantined for a period, so, in fact, I'm in quarantine right now.
I was in for a couple weeks, yeah.
So.
No, this is probably the safest way. I know Zoom, it is not perfect, we, we finding that out, but it works, so.
We're still getting the job done, so.
Yep.
And just so you know, um, just so you know, I just popped in my head, I went to the, my first department head meeting and I brought it up to the town administrator that we would, we wanted to get our own. So we could control it better, you know, so it would work better. And there, they, I understand he met with you, Dave, and you guys are trying to work it out, right? Some, I mean, for the whole town.
Uh, yeah, I met with the, the administrator a couple weeks ago, was on a. Uh, yeah, I met with the, the Administrator a couple weeks ago, was on a couple other things, but I do agree, we're using like, uh, it's like, I don't wanna go off, off subject, but let me just say this, like, for instance, the Board of Health had their meeting before us, and we use that same Zoom account. So I had a, I had a texter and see what happened, and meanwhile, then my laptop crashed, so it would be nice to have your own account, 'cause I think it makes it easier than to waiting for someone else to complete their meeting, so you can take that account over.
And this was discussed a while back, Tim, Tim had brought it up, and we were kicking it around, and it was kind of like, they didn't wanna, the powers-to-be just wanted us not to do it yet, so I don't know, so then, when we got a new Town Administrator, I decided that I just had an opportunity to talk, so I did, and I asked them about that and a few other things. So I mean, it's on the tape, you know, it's on, it's on YouTube.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask him again about it, see what he thinks.
But he did mention you, that you were, you, you're the cable guy, you know what I mean?
Oh, I'd be glad when this thing is over, all right. Thank you, though.
All right, so if there's nothing else out there, um, I'd like to turn it over to, to, uh, Mr. Reins.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just
Thank you.
First of all, um, I think the members are aware to the fact that, um, yeah, this, this is my last meeting this evening. Um, I wanna thank everyone who I've had the opportunity to work with through the years, you know, without their help, you know, a lot of the projects would not have come through fruition, so I just wanna thank everyone that I've had that opportunity to work with, including the present board, of course. And, um, I wanna move away from that. Um, everyone received this evening the warrant article in regards to the ten, ten, and tens. And what those are, the mandatory state set-asides, that go into the financial categories that Mr. Eckerson will speak about, um, after I'm done. And what I based those figures on this year were a baseline of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Many years ago, it always been based on a hundred thousand dollars, because that was what the average was. With all the new construction and monies that we received through the Registry of Deeds, and also monies appropriated through the State Legislature, the amount has gone up. So last year was, I believe, it was twenty-six point two percent, up top of my head, I think the town of Dayton received over and above the baseline of a hundred thousand dollars, which is the monies received through the one percent real estate tax. So you'll see twelve thousand five hundred dollars in the three categories, our five thousand dollar administrative budgets, and the remainder would be eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, which would go directly into the Undesignated Reserve. And that's monies that are sent into just that one category, and all three, all four of the categories, not including the administrative budget, will generate more monies if they're never used in those categories. Our administrative budget is always five percent, and that's what's mandatory through the state. And you'll see also that I broke that also down to our professional and technical, our administrative assistance pay, our dues, and our communications, just in case we have to put something into the newspaper. And those figures, uh, changed a little bit, the dues did, they went up to eight hundred and fifty dollars, as opposed to three hundred and fifty dollars in the past. Our, um, administrative assistant received the raise, so those monies have been included into that line item. Just in case, you know, um, Karen has to do extra work, there's extra monies that are included also in there, in case, you know, she has to do some, as I say, extra work, so. Um, that's all I have of that. In regards to the agricultural preservation restriction property that was purchased off of Elvis Street, which is the old Sanson Farm, we have completed the paperwork, the check has been sent to the state. Um, that was sent, I believe, I wanna say about two to three weeks ago, if I remember correctly. So that project has been closed out, they have been paid. We are still in negotiations for the land taking off of Boat Ramp Road and Pleasant Street for a possible, um, revamp of the Boat Ramp itself, the town of Dayton is still in negotiations with the landowner. The Brook Street project, that was taken care of, um, I believe we finalized that last year, before the, before the end of last year's fiscal year, I should say, that was finalized. So, I'm working on putting together the, my final uh, send-off for the annual report, to get those figures taken care of, of the baseline of the monies the town of Dayton receives, the percentage they receive from the state. And that's all broken down in the annual report, and you'll see that as well, as the ten, ten, and tens is a warrant article that'll be in the annual report. And also our warrant article for the Historical Commission project. The five percent administrative budget does not go into the annual reports. Um, that, that, those figures just go directly to the town accountant. Um, I believe, Mr. Chairman, I've covered everything.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to thank, oh, thank you, but I would like to say that, um, the idea of maybe having a, uh, following your lead on this, like, it's almost like a packet that could be sent out, uh, you know, keep doing this, uh, you know, gather all this stuff together, make sure every member has, kind of like the selectmen have a packet of information. And that way, you've probably done it traditionally.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before I forgets.
Go ahead.
I would, I would like to make a motion to accept the warrant article for submission to the Board of Selecting for the ten, ten, and ten set-asides in the five percent administrative budget.
Okay, motion made for all those items, which, uh, everybody has copies of that, correct? Um, is there any, uh, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, seconded, any discussion, any further discussion? I think it's pretty clear. Any questions? Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. Dave Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Adele?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Dave Marvell?
Aye.
And myself, aye, uh, Tom Berkwin. Got everybody, covered everything, sounds unanimous?
Karen, Karen, did you get all that from me?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, 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 Karen.
Yep.
She's, we're connecting pretty good tonight, from Berkeley. Okay, um, I think everybody else, uh, we, we went over everything. Dave, uh, if it's all right, Tim, are you done then, more or less?
Uh, yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's go, let's move to Mr. Eckerson for the financial report, and I understand he had a nice, uh, uh, meeting with the accountant, and they will, he will present his report to us. We got the floor, Mr. Eckerson.
Thank you, uh, Tom.
You call host, Dave, so you should be all set, sir.
Yes, here we go.
You can put your stuff up, yeah.
All right, you have a sec here. How's that look?
Oh, that's beautiful, love it.
All right, so, um, what happened here is, uh, I, I did talk to, uh, Chris LaViolette, and he helped me understand some of these numbers, which I thought were a little confusing, uh, and then I, he also sent me an updated report, and, uh, I need to ask if this was appropriate, but I emailed that out.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, it's just I had a very inadequate email list, as I found out, uh, tonight, while I was looking at the different emails, so some of you didn't receive it, and I apologize for that, but this is, uh, it wasn't any dramatic difference from the previous. Uh, in fact, I think the only thing that changed was he changed the date, so.
It doesn't change, uh, Tim mentioned it doesn't change, uh, certain times, it's dramatic.
Yes, so, uh, so let me, um, just, uh, and, and again, Tim just explained a number of these numbers himself here, but, uh, what we all wanna know, you know, to keep it short, is how much money is in the kitty for projects that have yet to be proposed? And that number should be at the lower right here, but I'm gonna explain that we have to, um, subtract a little bit from that number, uh, to get it, um, to actually have the correct number, okay? So here comes the explanation.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the first row across here, row eight, this row should, in effect, reflect what's in the bank account. And you know, uh, accounting, uh, you know, this is what's called accrual accounting, where things that have been actually committed uh, or promised have to be taken into account for. So the, even though we might have this large amount in the bank account, we have made certain commitments, promises, and, um, and those are reflected in the various columns, until finally, the bottom row here, row twenty-two, um, reflects the actual available balances. So, um, as, uh, Tim noted, there's a, a set aside for the, uh, ten, ten, ten. And it was based on a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, so twelve thousand five hundred for each of the ten, ten, ten categories. That's where those numbers come from. And in fact, uh, we have the actual number now, which turns out to be a hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety. And that's for the fiscal year, uh, that we are now concluding, uh, fiscal year twenty-one. So, uh, that, uh, has been added in, and, uh, Chris LaViolette assures me that we do have that money in hand now. That's been, uh, added to the number at the lower right. Now, the confusion, uh, arose over this column here, column G. And this, uh, or basically, the confusion is over the difference between fund balance reserved for encumbrances and for expenditures. And so the problem is, I think it's just in the terminology that accountants use. Uh, this number here is the amount that we've allocated and committed to the Lincoln Village Electrical Project. And numbers here are the total of the other items that Tim mentioned, the playground, Pleasant Street, and the, uh, agricultural preservation. And of course, the agricultural preservation, as Tim reported, the check has just been issued, this report is as the end of February, so it hadn't happened yet. All right, so apparently, in, in the world of accounting, these items here, called encumbrances, were on, um, last year's books, a previous year's book, so those books are closed. But the amount for Lincoln Village, in theory, we could still, town meeting could still back out of that project, rescind that vote. And so that is being counted in this spreadsheet as money that's still available to the CPC. Uh, so in effect, it's being added back in, because it's not a hundred percent a done deal in the view, uh, of accounting principles yet. So when we scroll way over to the right here, and look at that bottom-line number, we need to subtract the hundred and thirty-six thousand two eighty-one from that. If we want to understand how much we really have available for new projects. Hopefully, that's all clear, uh, and please, uh, ask any questions you have, and I'll try to answer them. I do think the presentation is pretty confusing.
I have a question on the panels. Uh, I have a question on the panels, you said that could be rescinded, um, as it is, they're putting in transformers, and they've had to, because of COVID and conditions like that, uh, and when that is finished, then they go up to bid for the panels, which we appropriated that money for. So if there was no activity on it, that's why.
Right, sure, yeah, it's, these things, projects do take a while, and, uh.
Yeah.
That's a good thing that you brought up, Adele, because I was actually, Mrs. Coller, because I was actually gonna ask them a pro-, like, kind of get a progress report on it.
Okay.
But that is more or less a good one, now I know what's, yeah.
I was just talking with them, um, Tuesday, about, and I questioned that, and, uh, they can't go ahead with it until these transformers are finished, and this seems to be, you know, a big job and held up. And they don't wanna do that until the better weather, because, you know, if the electricity is shut down for the tenants, so they have to wait for better weather to work on the transformers, then they will go up to bid on the panels.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mrs. Coller.
You're welcome.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion, any further? Basically, Dave, it's your, you're running your, your own report here.
All right, and, and I, I do see also here, here, this number here is the eighty-three thousand for the agricultural preservation, so in fact, it does reflect that, uh, the check was written for that, but it doesn't affect the bottom line here. So, um, so that is, um, my report, if there's no other questions, I'll turn it back to the Chairman then.
Once again, any questions, further discussion? Oh, nice to have a report, David. Go ahead, Tim.
Well, thanks, thanks to Mr. Eckerson for the report, Tom. I just wanna piggyback off of that, I believe that everyone is on the Coalition websites, um, and I believe they should have received an email down tonight, and I read through it, and they're predicting that the match this year is gonna be thirty-six odd percent this year, from monies to the Registry of Deeds, and also monies allocated through the state of Massachusetts. Now, also, within the confines of that email, um, there are now, if Brookline approves their vote, I believe it was, it's gonna be May fourth, that they would be the one hundred and eighty-seventh community to receive monies through the CPC. Now, in regards to the thirty-six point three percent, Dayton will receive exactly that amount under our one percent deduction from our real estate tax. If you received, or I should say, if you had a two percent reduction for your real estate tax, you would receive a portion or a percentage based on the thirty-six percent for your second round, and vice versa would go for your third round also, so I hope everyone understood that. So if you're a three percent community, you'll receive not only one round, but a second round, but also a third round, but it'll still be based, the second and third rounds will be based on a percentage of the thirty-six point three percent original match. And, that's all I have, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, it's kind of the timing that actually came down today, right? That email?
Yes, yes, it did.
Uh, I was just looking at it now, and there's actually, if you're into social media, there's a new guru of social media for this coalition. Facebook and Twitter, this, uh, woman that's gonna run that, because some people like to use Twitter and social media, so I guess there's some, it's just another way to communicate with the coalition, I guess.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanna say that, uh, to add to that, is that the numbers I just mentioned would not reflect until the November receipts come in. So you could predict that this year, Dayton would receive approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars or more from the states in regards to our CPC monies, so that's just a rough estimate, and maybe more, maybe less.
And Tim, would that be, would you agree that's not too bad?
The thirty-six percent match, if it is, it does happen, that would be the first time that they went over thirty, thirty percentile, and that was the Coalition's original goal all the way through.
Wow.
That's big.
I thought it'd go the other way with COVID, but this is great.
Yeah. Absolutely.
A lot of housing starts, a lot of housing starts, and a lot of, uh, properties being sold right now, so there's a lot of transactions being made through the Registry of Deeds, and such.
Yeah, that's true, there's a lot of building. And a lot of people selling, yeah, selling and everything. Um, anything else, folks? If there's no further discussion or, uh, questions, let's go ahead and take a vote on approving his presentation? Could I get a motion?
Make the motion to accept the financial report as given by Vice Chairman and Financial Officer, Mr. Eckerson.
And I second that.
And a second has been made. Any more discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, if there is none, seeing and hearing none, go ahead and call the roll. Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mrs. Collers?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Tom Berkman, Chairman, aye, is there anyone I missed? Okay, that sounds unanimous. So that's been accepted. On the next order of business, let's look at. Now, correct, Tim, can I just throw a question out to you? Uh, Mr. Reins?
Yeah, sure.
Just a question, um, on these, you had mentioned, which we all got the, the uh, emails. Do I, do we, we don't have to break every one of these things down and vote on it, do we, it's all set from that last thing that we covered?
Oh, no, no, there's, no, there's no voting necessary, that's just basically a piggyback off of Mr. Eckerson's report, that's all.
What I'm talking about now, I, I still have to break all these things down on individual votes? Or are we all set with everything for the town meeting and everything?
I, I believe we've just, we voted on the warrant article for submission for the historical commission, and that was voted.
And ten and ten, all that?
We voted on the ten, ten and tens, we, and also the, the administrative budget.
So we're good?
Yes.
Okay, let's just want to double check. Okay, folks, so the next thing, that was nice, we got that out of the way, I just wanted to double check so we didn't uh. Make uh, an error in the procedural era. The next thing is, um. I believe we would set the uh, next meeting?
No, any public input?
Oh, uh, that's right, you did, you had something, didn't you, Tim? Are you done on public input?
Um, well, we haven't, we haven't.
Any public input?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, very briefly. I'd like to, um.
Mr. Reins?
I'd like to say something in regards to what Mr. Eckerson mentioned earlier about um. Rescinding votes, um, that, that can't happen, and I want to say this in regards to. The lighting in the fencing in North Dayton. Has been so long that it would have to go reback out the bid by the Playground Commission, and then re-present it for more monies possibly. Or they could use their own funds to do their project, but I think at this point, because. The playground in the back has gone to zero, it may be a future possibility that the, your community, your committee in the future. May want to think about res, possibly rescinding that vote. And then putting those monies back into the undesignated reserve, or you can put those back. I, I would recommend putting them back into the categories that were voted on at town meeting in the warrant, if you would like to go that route.
Well, and this is due to the way that they're possibly not gonna. I mean, it's up in the air right now, but they don't know if they're gonna move on the north playground now. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
All right, so would you want to do that tonight?
Uh, no, because it's not on the agenda.
All right, so we'll do it down.
You would have to, you would have to put that on an agenda, if you'd like, for you, we need to look at at a future meeting, and that would be up there.
So we'll have to, we'll, we'll have to look at that down the road then. Everybody on board with that, more or less, it's informal discussion in a way.
I agree with Tim, I think it's a done deal, because everything's gonna have to get priced again, you have a whole new committee with the playground and uh.
It's gone on for years.
I thought we did great trying to move it along, but you know, what can you do?
Yeah, I, I thought it was a, Tim, once again, Tim, Mr. Reins did a lot of work.
Tim had a lot of great equipment going in there and everything, we're so close, but what can you do, town politics?
Politics.
And Tim, I appreciate uh, what you did for the playground too, because I really wanted up York Dayton, but uh. You know, you do diligence, it's just not gonna happen, so we move on. Yes.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, if I could, uh.
Go ahead, Dave, Mr. Eckerson.
Yeah, if, if we do go that path in the future, I just want to make sure that there's no, uh, that it is, um. The proper procedure is followed so that the money does go back to the CPC, and that.
Oh, yeah.
Can't be, you say that very confidently, but let's just make sure.
Oh, yes, no, 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 I, I want to, if, if I may.
Tim, go ahead.
If I may, I just want to just say what um, Mr. Eckerson just mentioned, is that um, oh no, you can go back to town meeting. And you can rescind the vote, and those monies will go back into the categories that they were appropriated from, it's not like the money went directly to the Playground Commission. And it's in their coffees to spend or anything like that, so it's all still. The encumbrances, and you go back in and vote at town meeting to overturn any, any encumbrance, even if you went to buy a fire truck, you did the same thing.
Yeah, and we will make sure, we'll make sure that it's done, you know, we'll make sure, like, we'll know what. We'll double check, Tim's been doing this for eight years, Tim?
Yes.
So he knows what he's talking about, and I, I, we can always check with every, the proper authorities to make sure. That we cross the Ts, dot the Is, as they say. So I don't think, you know, I mean, it's just something that. Not gonna get messed up, we'll lose that money.
No, 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 you did, the, 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 the commission would never lose those funds out of their um, funds.
Their purview, right?
Yes, they, they never lose that money.
Okay. Is there any other public input, thanks, Tim, again?
You're welcome.
Anybody else, anything else, public input, seeing and hearing none, let's move on to. Set in the next meeting, I believe, Karen, am I on the right track here?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Still with us?
Yeah, yeah.
I just checked to make sure we didn't lose it.
I'm still here.
It's working good, okay, uh, if, according to my calendar, that would be the thirteenth of May?
I think it'd be the twentieth.
The twentieth.
Oh, the fourth Thursday?
The twentieth, I lost something.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at the calendar wrong, you're right, it would be the twentieth, yeah.
The twentieth, okay.
My calendar's got a little, one of those blurry out numbers at the top. Okay, so it's uh, it's the twentieth, yeah, I'm looking at the calendar wrong. Is everybody good on the twentieth?
Seven o'clock, yeah.
Seven o'clock, and we're gonna continue with our Zoom format for safety reasons.
And hopefully we have a better experience next time around, so.
It happens, I mean, look at the first couple meetings I had, I mean, I, you guys lost me out somewhere in the desert, couldn't find me. All right.
Stuff happens.
Yeah, it was something, but anyhow, we overcame it, um, anything else on the, everything's good on that? Any final thoughts, uh, before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, Tim, I wish you the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Dave, Dave, just Dave, real quick, before I forget, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Tom, remind me who, I have, I have a flash drive. With all the contents that were given to me from the former chair when I took over, and I'll make sure that you have it.
Yes, sir. Excellent.
Uh, quick note on my part, Tim, I want to wish you the best, uh, you did a lot for this committee. And uh, you had your heart and soul into it, and uh, I think you will be missed, and uh. I wish you great luck in your next uh, committee. Now, I know you got a lot going on, we're planning right now, so uh, I wish you the best.
Thanks, Dave.
Anyone else, I just, uh.
I'd like to say to Tim, thank you so much, Tim, you've done so much and, and been such a pleasure to work with, and wish you the best. Thank you for.
Thank you, Mrs., thank you, Mrs. Coller, and the same for you, you, you've done a lot behind the scenes for us also in town, and a lot of people don't know it, so. Thank you. Thank you.
You're, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Tim, I second all those things. Great working with you.
And I, I'd just like to say, if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't even be on this committee, because you're the one that told me to join, to try it, you know? So here I am, and I didn't, I never thought I'd be the chairman. But I mean, hey, you know, you gotta step up to the plate, you know? The main thing is, I was willing to learn, so here I am, and uh, you know, it is a great team, Tim, and you've always had a good. Bunch of people, and you've always taught us all well, and we're gonna not disappoint you. We're gonna continue on a, a positive path, and we're gonna stay strong with our, what our mission is. And uh, we're, we're working for the people of Dayton. And that's what we're here for, to work, we're working for the people, so. We'll be, you know, accepting stuff in June again, so we'll see where it goes. But thank you so much.
Well, thanks, guys, yeah, I just want to say this is, um, I'm only a phone call away, and um, feel free to reach out. If anybody, uh, you know, needs a hand with anything, I'd be more than willing to help.
Plus, I know where you live.
Hey, hey, don't be telling everybody that.
No, I'm not gonna say nothing.
Yeah, all they need to do is look into the street list.
I know, I know.
How we can find you on Google too, your, your phone number is up.
There you go, there you go, it, honestly, guys, um, I, I just want to thank. Every member I've ever had the opportunity to work with in eight years, you know, it's, it's been a great committee. There, you guys are autonomous, don't let anybody come in there and try to bully you, any of yous, don't let it happen, um, the Board of Selectmen has no control. Neither does the town administrator, they can make recommendations, and that's as far as it goes, and you know, just continue to do the good work. Of our fellow residents of the great community that we all live in.
Exactly, thank you. And that's what I mean about the principles and the way this thing operates, that you've. I think one of the main reasons you got involved with it was for those very reasons, if I'm not mistaken, and to help the people.
Absolutely, you know, I, I've, I've always said this, that um, long after I'm gone, I'll just be a footnote in history, and someone else is gonna do exactly what. The nine of you us have done for years, so.
And I mean, you know, you can get pressure, but you don't have to cave, right? But anyhow. Maybe I shouldn't have said that, I don't know, but I mean, you know what I mean? Oh, it was just an off-the-cuff thing, I'm, you know, I hope I didn't offend anybody out there. All right, so, no, I don't mean, I don't mean us, you know, I mean, I'm out in the virtual world, but hey, you know what I mean, send me an email.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask you if um, if, if no one has anything further, I'd like to have the honor of uh. Making a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Absolutely. I'd like to have you have the honor, that would be an honor for us, Tim.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Community Preservation Committee.
And I would like to have the honor of seconding that.
All those in favor? I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the, I'll call the roll, but I think we know. Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye, my captain.
Aye, me captain, more power, and then um, Ms. Coller?
Aye.
Myself, aye, and uh, you know, with the mixed emotions. You know, we, it's kind of emotional, but you know, it's something that has to, it has to go, I guess, you know, has to take place. See, uh, any other, uh, did I cover it, did I get everybody? Yes, all right, I'm gonna say that motion carries, and uh, eight twenty-six PM, we adjourn, and I thank everybody.
Hey, guys, be, uh, be safe, and uh, we'll see you next time around.
Yeah, hey, uh, Karen, um, if you can hear me, if you need anything at any time, just, you have my phone number, feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Karen, thanks, thanks for everything you've done, you're, you're doing all right.
Good night, everyone, and thank you again, Tim, for all you've done.
Yeah, same here, Tim, good luck to you, sir.
Thanks, Tim, thanks, everybody.
Gentlemen, ladies, good night, take care, I'm gonna.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night.